Some kids slack off. There's so many opportunities I want to get.
Sorry, I was so blown away by our student representatives.
Resume that I'm like, alright.
You really are passionate about that.
Yes, I'm in.
Oh, please tell me I'm not frozen.
If I did, I mean, if I didn't, I think I'm in.
I'm in. Has everybody joined the meeting? The computer is frozen.
Have too many windows open?
No. I guess we're not ready.
Yes, I'm sure it is, especially because of the election coming up. It'll be fun. Did you just get?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of October 23rd, 2018 is now called to order. The time is 6:02 PM. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be put in the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography. We would like to take this opportunity to remind members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student reaches his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Carlos Cicero from Estero High School is this evening's student representative. He is currently enrolled in the Advanced Collegiate Experience as a high school senior while being a full-time college student. He is a member of the National Honor Society and Young Life Ministries and is playing on the varsity baseball team for his second year. Carlos leads worship in his youth group, teaching small groups, as well as teaching a class in their annual summer camp. His hobbies include adventuring in the outdoors and studying politics, government, and the economy. Carlos plans to get a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from Florida Gulf Coast University and move on to attend seminary and pursue a Master of Divinity with a focus on biblical and theological studies. He plans to use these degrees to preach and study the Word of God and show others how to do the same. Welcome, Carlos. We're glad to have you here. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, public comment, consent action items, which include three items under executive services, one of which is good cause. Dr. Atkins, please provide an explanation for this one item.
Yes, this is approval of the proposed 2019 legislative program for the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards. It's important to get this approved by the board so that we can start our advocacy efforts.
Very good. As presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. Three items under academic services, five items under business services, two items under human resources, one item under information systems, as well as eight items under operations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Mr. Toiber. Please record your vote. Motion carries 5-0. Ms. Fisher will deliver the invocation, after which Mrs. Giavanelle will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the invocation.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together this day. We ask for your blessing on all here present. Please guide and direct this meeting so that it is full of wisdom and productivity. Help us to work with responsibility, to develop strong relationships with the Lee County community, and to have respect for one another. Inspire us to make decisions which will benefit our school community. You are the source of all blessings. Please bless and protect our students, staff, and families with health, happiness, and peace of mind and heart. For this and all of your gifts, we praise and thank you. Amen.
The cadet presenting the colors for tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be introduced by Command Sergeant Major Billy Lansbury, Senior Army Instructor for the JROTC Program at North Fort Myers High School. Command Sergeant Major Lansbury retired from the Army in 2004 and has been with the Lee County School District since 2006. He is a 2012 Golden Apple recipient.
Thank you. The national colors for our Pledge of Allegiance tonight are presented by Cadet Area Commander Genesis Rapallo, Area Commander for the 15 Army JROTC Programs in Lee County Schools and North Fort Myers Red Knight Brigade Commander. She is a two-time national and three-time state mixed Raider Team Champion. Genesis is on the cross-country and track teams for North. Genesis has a 5.08 GPA and is a full-time dual enrollment student. She has been accepted to the United States Military Academy at West Point. Upon graduation, she plans to attend one of the service academies and serve as an officer in the military. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
You may be seated. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Dotick, please address the agenda item of public comment.
Sure. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it to me before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the board this evening, Ms. Morgan, the board chair, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair will address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during public comment to the superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. Time per speaker this evening is three minutes. Madam Chair, I have 11 cards.
Is there anybody on the right side of the auditorium who didn't complete a blue card and would like to address the board? Anyone on the left side? Please state your name.
Rami Hall.
Thank you. We offer the opportunity to those who may be unfamiliar with the public comment process to raise their hand and provide their names. The blue card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. If you did not complete the blue comment card, please proceed to Ms. Johnson on your left after completing your comments so that we have a written record. Thank you. Would you please call the first speaker?
Yes, Diane Nelson. Right here. Yeah, it's okay.
Actually, I just want to say thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Ma'am, your time's going, so.
Okay. My name is Ms. Nelson. Obviously, you know that. I'm a mother of Matthew Nelson that currently goes to Sunshine Elementary. I have a couple of concerns about that. The issues I have to face at Sunshine Elementary is that Sunshine has no teacher. He is a life skills student, and they have no teachers. They actually have paras teaching the class. And actually, both paras quit just last week, so they have another para in another classroom coming to that classroom with volunteers. And I feel that my child has been in a classroom run by paras. I feel that my child is being denied a quality education. I feel that they are just babysitting and not educating him. In first grade at Sunshine Elementary, my son's teacher threatened to urinate on my child after he was incontinent. She was fired that day, though. In second grade, which is last year, a para yanked my son by the arm in the parent pickup line in front of me and my husband, annoyed that my son was tapping on her on the arm pointing at us, which he's nonverbal, just to let you all know. Sorry. I spoke with the principal and felt like nothing's been done about that. Two weeks ago, a DCF worker came to my house to tell me that another staff member reported his teacher abusing him. And I didn't get any more information on that. I've been trying for the last year and a half to get him to Buckingham Exceptional because he is an exceptional student, and I was denied multiple times for an IEP. I was denied and told that it was too much paperwork. I think Buckingham Exceptional School will benefit my child in every needs that he needs because they'll have the staff there. They'll have, you know, the therapy that he needs, you know, everything that he needs and qualifies for. Buckingham Exceptional will provide him with that. And I did a tour with them and stuff like that, and I love the school. Very patient principal. The environment is awesome. But my regards is Sunshine Elementary has no teachers. Their paras quit. I have to be worried that my son is being physically abused.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
It's okay. The next speaker is Yip Ram Dervehanian.
Yip Ram Dervehanian, Lehigh Acres, Florida. First off, I love my country, but I fear my government. I'm speaking on behalf of citizens in my community. I live in Westminster-Gulf Community, and we're against this half-cent increase in sales tax. You people misspend our money over and over again. All I have to say, get your act together. Maybe people will vote for that half-cent increase. You're putting out information. I see on TV where buildings are falling apart, air conditioners not working. This is all just to put a lot of crap out there. So all I can say is spend your money correctly, and maybe we can think about increasing the sales tax. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, John Larson Shudlik.
Good evening, Superintendent Atkins, Madam Chairperson Morgan, members of the Lee County School Board, and guests. I come to speak against the tax. I'm a veteran, and I took the oath of office to fight all enemies, foreign and domestic. Call it a half a percent tax increase. Let me tell you exactly what it is. You have two ad valorem tax increases included. You have impact fees that we pay for, and you have other hidden taxes that we pay for. You have real estate taxes and tangible personal taxes. They're both ad valorem taxes. We're talking much more than what you indicate is a half a percent increase. It's much, much more than that. I don't think there's a person here, that an accountant with an MBA that could find out all the hidden taxes that also the voters of Lee County have to pay for. It seems that everything that this school board does is for their own personal benefit. People are just sick and tired. What happened to the Florida Lottery? Remember that Florida Lottery that was supposed to be for the teachers, satisfy them for decades? No, that's not it. It's a fiasco like the New Bonita School. If you look on the ballot, and there's an item there that it says there is going to be an oversight by an independent citizens committee. Folks, we've had advisory committees right along for years. Every single time that someone doesn't agree with you, they are ostracized, they are fired, and I say, do the right thing. Just say no to this tax increase. Thank you.
Next speaker, I have a card for Curtis Sheard. I don't believe I see Mr. Sheard in the audience, so we'll pass on that. Jacqueline Perez.
Board, last board meeting, I addressed concerns of theft, corruption, and disparate treatment of employees. No one has reached out to interview any of the key employees that have pertinent information, nor has any investigation been initiated. This has been a common and typical response from the superintendent and this board when concerns of corruption have been brought forth, FEMA being one, and the OIG concerns in April. On Sunday, May 6th of 2018, I met with Lloyd Perkins, where he told me the corruption was rampant in maintenance. He also stated that the superintendent had utilized equipment to make improvements on his own property. He also stated that he had friction with the director of maintenance and was told that he had no authority over this director and that the superintendent was the only individual that could question him, as they have a close relationship. You have serious issues within this department, and it has been flagged in three of your audits. In your first audit, they give it credit for the use of GPS in vehicles, yet I have an email that states otherwise. When a GPS report was requested on a key supervisor in maintenance, the response was, there was no GPS. What is more disturbing is that your Director of Professional Sanders has investigated maintenance over the years due to reported thefts of thousands of dollars, HVAC equipment, freon, roofing supplies that totaled over $90,000. And just last year, several lawn mowers and other lawn equipment disappeared over a holiday weekend. I have a two-page missing supply list that was generated from your maintenance department, and some of the items in here individually cost more than $15,000. This is a two-page list. I'm going to give that to clues. And many of those items, I was told, are going to be marked obsolete and discarded. So no one is questioned when in reality they went missing. So when employees now are coming forward and making complaints to me of unfair salaries, ignored for promotions, after many years of dedication to the district, I find it disturbing when you have one employee that's the haves and the other that are the have-nots. I verified salaries to make sure they were telling me the correct information, and it's true. And I think you all need to look at that also. The issue of disparate treatment in salaries and workloads is quite apparent with your minority employees. This concern was brought to your superintendent on several occasions over the years prior to becoming superintendent. He never addressed the issue, nor has he taken any corrective measures to safeguard the taxpayers' money. And I feel that you're all failing your jobs and your duties. You need to look into this. I'm begging you. Please look into this. Your silence is so deafening to us. I'm not coming here because I want to be a pain in your butt. I'm coming here because I'm a concerned person. I have phone calls coming in to me from employees because they've seen that.
Your time's up. Ron Pure is the next speaker.
Hi, Ron Pure, Bonita Springs. I also represent Taxpayer Action Group, also known as TAG. Last time I was here, I covered a couple of things in particular, and that was a couple of schools that I had learned about that were, to my estimation, about $36-plus million over budget. And tonight, I'd like to address a few things that I didn't have time to do last week, and that is a circular that we're circulating. We will not reach as many people as the news press or the Bonita News Group, also known as the House Organ for the Board of Education. But let me hit you first with the headline, "Lee Schools Has $355 Million A Year Spending in Policy Problems, Not a Revenue Problem." In our view, we've listed about 15 to 20 items on the piece, and it's been methodically put together by people who have experience in doing this kind of research. Now, one of the things that has been said often by many on the board is that impact fees that you folks are charged with collecting on our behalf from developers to pay for the development that goes on in the county has not been up to the level of collections that a consultant report said is doable. And what I'd like to know is, with the knowledge given to me by two Lee County Commissioners, Larry Keiker and Cecil Pendegras, both of them told me, and others, that the school board has the option as to whether or not to follow their suit, which has been abysmal as far as the collection of these fees is concerned. And some of your spokes folks have said, no, you don't have that opportunity. You have to comply with what the commission dictates to you. Now, in either case, that represents a big problem with respect to the capital items that you folks are groveling now for, and I think unjustifiably. And I'd like you to fill us in, if you would, once and for all, all the legalities that are concerned with this impact fee business and so on. You have left off the table for the past six or so, seven years, the capacity to collect 100% of the impact fees. Now, that being the case, that's real bad news. You've missed a tremendous opportunity.
Sir, your time's up. Sir, your time's up. Thank you. Kim Hawke.
Jacqueline Perez is the fearless and tireless leader of the opposition this time around. This is our third sales tax proposal in 18 years. And the most disturbing thing is the fact that when she points out corruption and theft, that the response of this district is not to investigate the theft or the fraud or the corruption. The response is to install a privacy fence around the maintenance lot. The very next day after we were here, a fence went up, a privacy fence went up around the lot. The maintenance workers were lined up and threatened, and they were told that any whistleblower would be fired immediately and that they all should just keep their mouths shut. And unfortunately, this is the response we see district-wide. When there's a bad When there's a bad principal, a bad director, bad management, anywhere, anybody who points it out is singled out and punished for that. Everyone that I know who works in the district lives in a constant state of fear for retribution. And I'll tell you that I have never tolerated bullies, I've never been intimidated, I refuse to be silenced. And last week, when Kathleen Morgan threatened to throw me out of this room, the reason I stood up and walked out of here is because for 16 years, my father beat the hell out of me, knocked me unconscious more times than I can remember, more times than I want to remember. And when I finally escaped that, at age 16, and started living my own life, I vowed I would never tolerate bullying. The reason bullying is rampant in this district is because it starts here and works its way downstream to every child. Now, I'm going to make two predictions. One is that this sales tax is going to be close. I think it's going to be about 50/50. But keep in mind, if you win, you've still lost, because half the people in this county are going to be aggravated, angry, disillusioned, disenfranchised. They're going to have a bad taste in their mouth. And the other prediction I'm going to have is eventually, I hope in my lifetime, school vouchers will become the norm in this country. School vouchers will create a free market in K through 12, much as we have in the college system. And it's going to introduce competition, free markets, and it'll put pressure on the government schools. The government schools will fade away. They won't completely disappear, I don't believe. I think we will always have some government schools, just like we have state colleges. But we will have a thriving private school industry, and that'll make things better for everybody. And I'm looking forward to that day.
Next speaker is Louis Navarro.
Louis Navarro, Cape Coral resident. I'd like to bring up a few points. I'd like to see an audit of the self-insurance plan. I heard rates went up again, and this plan was supposed to save money years ago when we did this. I haven't seen anything on that, so I was having a concern, and I'd like you to look into it, like the gentleman there said, look into these things. I was a little disturbed. $3,850 for flyers to promote the tax increase, putting them in the report cards of the students in middle and high school, I believe it was. Why should we pay that? We can't spend $3,800 against the tax plan. Teachers need a 13% pay raise like you got Dr. Atkins. I really believe that. Why would teachers want to vote for this tax increase for buildings? That perplexes me. I think it's a talc thing, trying to promote things, because you guys meet together, and I still think that's out of the sunshine. Even our friends in Manatee and Sarasota County have a tax for extra salary for teachers, and they're at 44K plus, and we're at 40. The new school board salary for you folks here is $42,873. Starting salary of a teacher, $43,000. I know the state sets it, but you still should be ashamed when a teacher makes less than a school board member. And there's something wrong with that. That's why you can't get teachers, and they're leaving, and you got Paris teaching classes. Even my son left. I think you should clean up your act with the budget, and you all should vote no to the sales tax. We can start over again as friends and work together on something decent. You need to look into privatization of maintenance, bus, and all that, and we wouldn't have this stuff going on that Jacqueline has brought up. And we've got studies from that, and I've got friends at Duval County that are ready to help me when you call me, but you never call me. Thank you, and good luck. We'll see who the winner is.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. Keep going.
Should we put a box of donuts on it? I'm done.
Thanks. The next speaker, Sylvia Huggins.
My name is Sylvia Huggins. My foster grandparent at Jane Stevenson International. Have a problem with the BI unit being over there. It's a problem since day one. You guys place them over there. They're very disrespectful on a daily basis. They're running, the whole staff is in chaos. The school is all in chaos because of these students. They come in the cafe, they get angry because they can't receive extra breakfast, or whatever the case may be. Then they knock over the trash cans, tap the cafe, and other kids in there, even the babies, the BPKs, the kindergarten, all the babies are around, all this chaos is going on with these BI behavior kids that you guys have put over there. And to say furthermore, they're very disrespectful to the little girls that go over there. My granddaughter been going over since she was in kindergarten, she's now a fifth grade over there. And her fifth grade year is not going to be, her memory of a fifth grade year is not going to be a little boy being inappropriate to her, such as when she was on PE one day, and they was running, and they happened, the girls, group of girls happened to stop, and one of the little BI, whatever, behavior unit little boys, said, what are you girls talking about? And they was like, what do you mean? Are you talking about boys' private parts? I mean, come on, what is that to say to a little girl, to my granddaughter, which is a fifth grader that has been over there since kindergarten, and she's never experienced that type of behavior since they have been over there, it's just erotic. And then that was, that was the first situation. Then, another situation in the cafe, she was eating lunch, minding her business. Now, I'm not just bragging, but she's a perfect little angel, she never gives anyone any trouble, she's not disrespectful in no way at all, never has been, because I don't tolerate that. The little boy sitting over across from her, making hand gestures at her and another little girl, towards her, and she told me about it. So with that being said, would you want your granddaughter's fifth grade year, her last year at Jane Stevenson, to experience that? Would you want that for your child or your granddaughter? No, you wouldn't. So with all due, you need to get some of them over there. They don't belong at Jane Stevenson. They're just bringing our school down. I look at it as you guys are using Jane Stevenson as a dumping ground. That's what you're using them for, a dumping ground. And also, we have a kid that comes all the way from Pine Manor, and he attends school at Jane Stevenson. How is that? He passed several schools to get to Jane Stevenson. Why is he over there? And he is one of behavior BI unit child as well. With that being said, y'all need to remove those kids off our campus. There's no one to get them calm when they're all in uproar, they fight one another, they're very disrespectful to our staff, and we have a lot of female staff administration, a lot of female administrators. They're very disrespectful on a daily basis, not one day, every day. They come to school.
Your time's up.
Thank you, Ms. Huggins.
Your time's up. Jerry Ware.
Good evening, the Board and Superintendent. I merely want to ask, one of your agreements in the NAACP paperwork is that you would be coming to the community. When you come to the community, I would appreciate it if you would inform us how you plan to deal with behavioral issues. That's my concern. There's money there, I'm told, like $345,000 grant, or whatever that amount is, to be used for behavioral. So whenever you all decide to come to our community, I wish you would address how we can better deal with the behavioral units, because it's really bad at those schools. I just, I'm not going to even bother to even try to talk about it this afternoon. But when you come, I would appreciate it if you all would address behavioral units, okay? Thank you.
That's it.
Ms. Hall.
Maybe, Remy Hall.
People ask the difference between a leader and a boss. The leader leads, and a boss drives. I think this quote by Theodore Roosevelt is still relevant today. We need to see real leadership in Lee County and on this board. Ms. Morgan, you stated at the last board meeting that testing is state mandated, and that Lee County, that in Lee County, we have less testing now than ever. You are very wrong. It's actually troubling how misinformed this board is on operations of the classroom. Did you know it was determined that middle school math curriculum did not align enough with the Florida standards, so teachers are not allowed to use the tests and quizzes in the book? Did you know that 100% of middle school math classes revolve around the FSA? Do you realize that the pressure this superintendent and his administration has put on principals to perform well on the FSA controls how schools are run? When my daughter took the ACT for the first time this summer, ending her sophomore year, she scored Ivy League range, that's the 99th percentile. I thought it was interesting that her education had never been tailored towards the ACT. She had never even had ACT tutoring. She had a fantastic education, though, at Cypress Lake Middle School and Fort Myers High. Excellent education will result in excellent test scores. You don't need to teach towards a test. You are depriving our children of a proper education by teaching towards the FSA. Did you know that all middle school math tests are taken on your Google Chromebooks? Did you know that high school math testing is done on paper and pencil? Did you know that AP, ACT, SAT testing are done on paper and pencil? What will these middle schoolers do when they get to high school and they're given tests on paper, and they've only done it on a Chromebook? While I, while I understand grading math tests are time-consuming and teachers are paid very little, you are depriving them of a proper math education. Every middle school student will pay for this in the future. I'm asking for the board to demand immediate change tonight to what's happening in the middle school math classes around the county. You are elected officials, you are nonpartisan, your duty is to protect the kids. You're elected as individuals, you don't have to only let the chair speak for you. When people in the community come here to speak and give you their opinions, reach out to them, give a comment at the end. You guys have stopped that lately. It's very troubling. Today, it was said that when you were going to discuss the superintendent's evaluation, you were only to speak about the positive. I think this mentality trickles through the district. Bury the problems, focus on the positive, and I think you're missing the point. Bringing problems to life is how you solve problems. You represent a district that's hiding many things. It's National Bullying Prevention Month, there's a lot of bullying that happens in our schools. Who are the principals accountable to?
Thank you to everyone who spoke this evening. Diane Nelson, where are you? I know that somebody from the district will be reaching out to you about your, your son. So we, we heard you, and Dr. Atkins will see that someone reaches out to you. With respect to some of the comments made tonight, and comments made at the meeting, our last meeting, I'd like to say something. At our last board meeting, seven allegations were made by a member of the public in public comment regarding the conduct of maintenance staff and appropriate handling of maintenance materials and equipment. Superintendent Atkins has prepared a two-page document for the board responding to the allegation. Hours, hours of research by staff, by the superintendent. Valuable staff time was spent on researching the allegations. There is no evidence whatsoever supporting any of the allegations. The superintendent's response to the board is a public document, you are welcome to reference it. I want the public to know that maintenance staff was initially alerted to the individuals collecting alleged documentation by a vendor who reported to district staff that he was being harassed. An employee has spoken about tendering his resignation as a result of the false allegations leveled against him. On behalf of the board, I thank the maintenance team for their work and greatly regret this incident. The board members, no, the district does not have to tolerate members of the public or employees creating a hostile work environment, and will pursue appropriate actions if situations such as this arise again. And as I said, the board members are in receipt of the comment, and it is a matter of public record. I have no further comments. Dr. Atkins, do you have any comments?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Okay. Next is approval of consent action items. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven days prior to the school board meeting. We are expected to review all material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshop with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pool for discussion?
I have none this evening.
I have none.
No, thank you.
No, ma'am.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the board's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
By Ms. Fisher, seconded by Mr. Toyver. Please record your vote. There to go. Dr. Atkins, would you please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment who were approved on the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to do so. First person, Kimberly Stenson, the Alva School Teacher to Assistant Principal. Next, Jana Holcomb, Cape Coral High Reading Coach to Riverdale High Assistant Principal. And last, Stacy Winfrey, the Alva School Assistant Principal to Title I Program Administrator, Title I and migrant.
Well, congratulations to all. Okay, it's time for board member comments. I will start with Ms. Fisher.
And I have no comments this evening.
Mrs. Giavennelli.
I just have a little bit. I want to be clear on my position regarding the sales tax. My choice has not been whether there is a need, but rather, has our administration shown a willingness to be transparent and a good steward of our dollars? The question has been, do I support giving the money without the confidence that it will be spent properly, or resist support in order to foster change? I have a fiduciary responsibility to spend our assets wisely. Should the tax fail and we borrow the money, an oversight will need to be in place, just like it would have to be in place if the sales tax passes. The district needs to gain the confidence of our taxpayers. The sooner we can do that, the sooner the kids will benefit. Reinforcing the current behavior as related to how the recent audit findings has been handled, in my opinion, created an entitlement of business, as usual, without heightened accountability. Our kids need schools, security, and healthy buildings. That does not, however, reconcile a disregard of stewardship of our assets. As the school board administration, we do get in this position, we didn't get in this position overnight. We can only get out of it by not bullying, and the need for enhancements based on emotion. We require our students to earn their education. I encourage our administration to earn back the community's trust that can start with straightforward communication. Thank you.
Mr. Toyver. Mr. Cicero.
Yes, I'm just glad to be here. I appreciate all of your comments. I can't address one in particular instance where one of you spoke, forgive me, I don't remember who it was, but one of you spoke of whistleblowers, as you called them, who speak out to the corruption in teachers and principals and administrators, and how they're ostracized or fired if they, they bring up allegations out of fear of covering up the district. I will not speak to the exact instance, but I know specifically of one instance in my life where that has not happened, and that the proper channels were addressed of a particular staff member who was successfully, and is in the process of being punished for, for something they should not have done in their position. And I have, of course, in a, in a school district this size, there will be times where things fall through the cracks, and I appreciate the public comment for bringing up things. However, I do believe there is people in place, there are people and processes in place that address this issue and ensure that our students are safe. That's really, really all I have to say.
Thank you, and that was a powerful statement. I appreciate that. We all appreciate it. I have no comment. Mr. Dotick.
I have none.
Dr. Atkins.
My only comment is that, as just echoing what you had said earlier, we did
My only comment is that, as just echoing what you had said earlier, we did spend a lot of time really investigating, looking into this matter in the maintenance department. There are some people that work very hard over there, and I think it was, you know, it was important for us to do that, and I would encourage each and every board member here at the table, I'd be happy to answer those questions with you because I think it's important for you to know basically all the source of that, those concerns, and what we found in this investigation. It's, like I said, critically important. I think our employees want you to know that. I certainly want to know that because in Mrs. Giavennelli's comments, I think we strive to do that every single day. We want to be transparent. That's why we put our budget on there. That's why we put our audits on there. That's why we go out of our way to explain the audits. And I, you know, we do have disagreements, and I think it's important for us to stand up for ourselves, too, because we also, in my opinion, have been bullied. And what I mean by that is those in power, when we try to stand up for our children, I think they have really pushed back extremely hard. I've been very shocked and surprised with the outcome of this, you know, the efforts toward this referendum, and I think it's important for our public to know the truth. And so I believe honestly that every member of this board, including Mrs. Giavennelli, actually shared Mrs. Giavennelli's request or desire for us to be transparent and accountable to our public. But we all have to work real hard to get the word out, and that's why I think it's important for you to spend the time with me being allowed to answer questions as it relates to this situation in the maintenance department. Thank you. That's all the comments I have.
Thank you. The next scheduled meeting of the board will be November 7, 2018. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Oh, moved by Ms. Giavennelli. Seconded by Ms. Fisher. Please record your vote. This meeting is adjourned.